Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. May I have your attention, please? Before we begin this meeting, we ask that everybody silence your cellphones. The Fort Bend ISD Board of Trustees is an open meeting for the public to observe the board conducting district business. Therefore, audience items, members may address the board during the designated audience items section on the agenda. If you have any printed materials you want to give to the board, you must put it right into the board secretary, Norma Perez, or to me, and we will provide them to the board. We also ask the members of the audience to be respectful of others, remain quiet during the meeting, so that everyone is able to hear the proceedings. For your convenience, microphones have been provided on both sides of the boardroom. Please speak directly into the microphone if you're asked to answer a question or address the board during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Antiveros. The time is 6:02 PM, and this meeting is hereby called to order. We have the presence of a quorum, and the meeting has been duly called, and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. Please stand for the pledges of allegiance, and remain standing for a silent invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing for a silent invocation, and we would like to take a moment of silence for the passing of Councilmember Larry Green. He passed a couple of weeks ago suddenly, and we are appreciative of all he has done for our community and for Fort Bend ISD, so let's honor him with a moment of silence. You may be seated. First up this evening are our recognitions. Dr. Dupree.
Yes, Madam President. If the board would join me in front of the dais, we will recognize outstanding students and staff this evening.
Madam President, Dr. Dupree, members of the board, we have a couple of outstanding students we'd like to recognize this evening, so if I could please have Ms. Daisy Ricklick and Saadri Jones come forward from Lakeview Elementary. Now, both of these amazing students are third-generation students at Lakeview. That's right. These two students exhibit try and do more than they have to do every day, which is part of the Lakeview Vikings pledge. They have a little something they wanted to give you, and we want to give them another round of applause.[231.87][231.87](applause) Do you want to go ahead and pass out your... And these students had an amazing weekend at Lakeview, their centennial on Saturday. Their friends and colleagues did a great job in celebrating 100 years, so congratulations Congratulations to Daisy and Saadri. Thank you so much, guys.[291.64][291.64](applause) And if we can have all of the amazing staff here supporting our students and parents from Lakeview, we'd like to have you stand up for a round of applause. These students are amazing, and your contribution to support them should be applauded. Congratulations to Lakeview. Next, I'd like to introduce a friend of ours, Mr. Richard Emmerich from Crockett Middle School. Mr. Emmerich? If you could please come forward, I'd like to announce that he won the Well-Hamina C. Robertson Excellence in Science or Mathematics Teaching Award from the Houston Museum of Natural Science, and the Shell Science Teaching Award from the Shell Oil Company, and the National Science Teachers Association. These are amazing national awards, and we are just so proud of you.[351.31][351.31](applause) He has represented Fort Bend ISD very well on the national circuit, and I can tell you too that as a former HEB Excellence in Education Rising Star Award winner, he's represented the district very well. And if you'll remember, he was also the 2016 District Secondary Teacher of the Year. So, we appreciate Mr. Emmerich, and we're so glad that you're here with us this evening.[378.00][378.00](applause) And that concludes our recognition.
Next up are our audience items. We have two speakers this evening. We're going to start with Ms. Carrie Waschenfelder. Is she here this evening? Is Ms. Waschenfelder outside? If you could hand them to Ms. Perez, she'll get them to us. Thank you, Ms. Waschenfelder. You know the drill. You have three minutes, and Ms. Halliger will tell you when you have 30 seconds remaining.
Thank you. Welcome, Madam President, Dr. Dupree, the board. My name is Carrie Waschenfelder. I'm president of Fort Bend Employee Federation, home of 1,900 school employees. And I'm here today because we are very, very concerned about the prospect of the $13.1 million in cuts that is anticipated in the budget. We've had two different meetings with our higher leadership among the board and our union, and we have carefully evaluated, and I've presented this to you, we have found 13.18, actually, cuts in the budget that we feel would not seriously jeopardize the quality of education. That was our number-one concern. Not what we liked, because nobody really likes to tell coaches they're going to have to teach six classes, because they surely do enough in their day with after-school work, but we wanted to do what was best for students, faculty, parents, the entire community. And so, we presented this list, and I can, just to highlight a few of the things, for instance, we are in favor of eliminating convocation. We feel that Dr. Dupree can give us his pearls of wisdom in other ways besides spending $77,000. We read about realigning the true cost of different departments with the budget. That alone is $1 million. We're in favor of that, of course. We would like to eliminate outside consultants and put a moratorium on use of non-district facilities and a moratorium on travel. And when you put all that together, including flipping the bell schedule, you get the $13.1 million. So, these are the things we'd like you to really seriously consider over some of the other 60 different recommendations that you put out on the ideas for closing the gap information item that was on the website. But there were some things on that website that we were really upset about, so we want to talk about that just briefly. One, we would like to preserve student field trips. That was something that was put on the cut list, that we feel that from all the experiences all of us have had on field trips, we know how enriching that is to the children.
30 seconds.
Also, please do not cut transportation to academies. That's an equity issue. We want to have everybody to have access to the different academies, and also maintain our staff of librarians. I cannot tell you how strongly the teachers feel about this. And also, our educational assistance, as they were invaluable in helping balance out the problems that we have on campus, whether it is in individual classes, covering classes, or whatever happens, we need those educational assistance. Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you, Ms. Waschenfelder. Thank you for being here. Next up is Mayor Charles Jessup. Mayor, you'll have three minutes, and Ms. Halliger will tell you when you have 30 seconds remaining.
Do my introductions count?[665.82][665.82](laughter) If they do, hi, folks.
Okay.[671.13][671.13](laughter) Why don't you go ahead and tell us who's here with you?
Madam President, board, Superintendent Dupree, we have a few folks from Meadows Place here. If y'all would raise your hand, don't get loud, but say hello.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm here this evening because I found out there's some requirements laid forth by the master plan that include Meadows Elementary. And I just want everybody here to know that City of Meadows Place considers Meadows Elementary very, very important to our community. It is, in fact, the heartbeat of our community, and we live and die by that here, and everybody here values that elementary school just as much as I do, and in many ways, it's a true partnership. But more importantly, as I said, it's the heartbeat of our community. You've got folks that went there that now teach there, folks that moved away that came back so that their kids could go there, and we just want y'all to know that it matters. I want y'all to be aware that it was Meadows Place students that opened up our community garden. Soon, they'll be able to walk across the bridge to our new Discovery and Nature Center. It's fourth and fifth graders from Meadows Elementary walk out and get to go to the trout release by Texas Parks and Wildlife, and that's the only school in the state of Texas that gets to do that, and they recognize that in their stuff. And that's all, I mean, that's all part of what we live in Meadows Place and believe in, and we want you to know that we support our school. We'll be turning out soon for Old Town Meadows, for PTO, et cetera, so we can do that, but the City of Meadows Place will do anything it can to support coming to a good conclusion for the school, Meadows Elementary, as y'all work through this facilities, changeover, whether it be rebuilding one at a time, if we need to work with you on allowing other parking facilities, anything we can do, I want y'all to know that we will do that to make sure that it comes to a good conclusion for Meadows Elementary. We have also with us Principal Michelle Labus, because she cares too, as y'all well know, and she's a big part of what goes on in that school and in our community. So, we just wanted to let you know that we're here, we're asking for your support and let you know that we support you in a tough decision, and if there's anything we can do to assist, we're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We appreciate you being here. Thanks for all the residents for being here as well. You know, guys, this is something that is on our agenda this evening, so thank you for turning out and being a voice. We will have some community meetings coming up in the next couple of weeks, and I would encourage not only everyone here, but everyone, anyone who's not here, to attend those, give us your feedback, and we appreciate the offer of partnership, because these are tough decisions, and we need the partnership. So, thank you very much for being here. Okay. Next up, we're going to have information items. So first, we're going to go through our Fort Bend ISD early literacy update. Dr. Dupree.
Yes, ma'am. Deanna Sevedra, our chief academic officer, is going to begin the presentation as we discuss an idea to kind of transform the learning in the Willow Ridge feeder pattern by starting at pre-K and literacy at the elementary school, beginning at Ridgemont Elementary. So, I'll turn it over to Deanna.
Hi, Deanna. Good evening. Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, and Dr. Dupree. I'm excited this evening to share a wonderful opportunity with you to meet the educational needs of our students in the Willow Ridge feeder pattern. Tonight's presentation, in tonight's presentation, we'll share the national data associated with reading. We'll share a proposed model of how we may address the reading needs in the Willow Ridge feeder pattern. We'll talk about staffing that we need to support the instructional model. We'll share with you the program outcomes that we anticipate and metrics that we'll use to monitor those outcomes. In addition, we will share with you the next steps that still need to be worked on for us to build out the plan. This evening, I also have Dina Hill, our executive director of special education, and Stephanie Williams, our executive director of teaching and learning, who will assist me with the presentation. But before we begin, I would also like to thank all of the departments who collaborated along with the Academic Affairs Division to bring you the plan this evening. We had assistance from the Department of School Leadership, from the Communications Department, from the Department of Strategic Planning, from the Budget and Finance Department, from the Human Resources Department, the Facilities Department, and the Technology Department. It took all of us working together to really look at what might we do different to meet the literacy needs of our students in the Willow Ridge feeder pattern. So, excuse me, I'm sorry. Got it? Okay. So, I'll begin this evening by sharing with you that the most fundamental responsibility for schools is to teach students to learn to read. And in our visioning documents, it's evident that that's important to us in Fort Bend ISD. And so, as I walk through the presentation with you this evening, I will share with you the importance of us to invest our time in teaching students to read, so that they can then transition from learning to read into reading to learn, because as they matriculate through the system, that is going to guarantee their success. And we can only hope to inspire and equip our students to pursue futures beyond their imagination if they can read and read at high proficiency levels. So, at this point, I'd really like to transition and share with you some of the...
You've got this.
Share some of the national data with you associated with early literacy. And what the national data says is that the vast majority of students can learn to read. But with that statistic also comes with the fact that in our nation, there is about 20% of our students who struggle as readers. They do not have high proficiency levels, and it hibits them from reading independently and reading for the sake of enjoyment. And that many times closes doors to students in terms of what their experiences may or may not be. So, when we think about reading statistics associated with African-American students, English-language learners, and economically disadvantaged students, that statistic goes up quite drastically. So, it's critical, as I open the presentation, for us to really focus on our literacy needs and to focus that literacy at the early grades with pre-K, kinder, and first grade. Reading at first grade and exiting first grade at high proficiency levels is critical. I'm going to transition to Ms. Stephanie Williams, and she'll share with you what that data looks like in Fort Bend ISD as compared to the national data.
Good evening. As Deanna said, once we understood the national data, we wanted to take a look at our feeder pattern data and draw some conclusions there. So, what we found in the Willow Ridge feeder pattern is that less than 60% of students are displaying mastery in reading. This represents data between 2014 and 2017 from our STAR test and is representative of all of the test K-12 for reading. After looking at the STAR data, we wanted to look at our local assessment framework, and as you know, we've implemented a universal screener this year, and we've recently given the middle-of-the-year screener. The chart below shows elementary universal screener data, and the percentages represent the percent probable reader. The universal screener defines a probable reader as one that is able to access and read grade-level text. So, we'll be able to see the differences between the district percent probable reader and the feeder pattern percent probable reader. What this data did is it reinforced our inference that the root cause of our issues is related to literacy, particularly the development of early literacy skills in our students in pre-kindergarten, kindergarten, first grade, as they first learn how to read and then transition in grade two to reading to learn. And as Deanna said, being able to read to learn opens access to all of the content areas. So, as we considered this data, we knew that it was time for us to make a strong and bold intervention, and we are proposing to do that through the development of an early literacy center using what's known as a school redesign model. There are components that TEA defines within a school redesign model, and I'll take you through a couple of those right now. The first is the identification of new leadership that is highly trained in the instructional model, which we'll use at the center. So, after identifying a new leader, we would put that leader, work with that leader to frame the instructional model, the master schedule, and all of the wraparound services that would happen at the campus. The innovative instructional model for early literacy is the research-based model of balanced literacy that we would use there. We would use that balanced literacy model across content areas, making access to and use of grade-level and appropriate text for students, the foundation for learning all content areas. That new leader would also oversee the implementation of an early intervention special education academy at the same site as the early literacy center. And finally, that leader would be charged with implementing a robust community engagement strategy that sought to partner with parents and community members to support the development and enrichment of literacy skills while providing families with needed wraparound services at the neighborhood school. The other thing that a school redesign calls for is an external partnership, someone outside of our school district, a group outside of our school district that's able to provide development around the innovative instructional model, who is seen in the field as an expert in helping teachers and principals and school leaders implement the balanced literacy model. We are endeavoring to approach this school redesign with a phased approach, so that we can start with pre-kindergarten and kindergarten, and then move up into the later grades as we go. Speaking a little bit about the instructional model, balanced literacy is a comprehensive framework that acknowledges the reciprocal nature of reading, writing, speaking, and listening. It does that through the workshop model, readers' and writers' workshop, where students have access to authentic text, authentic reading experiences around the content they're learning, and also writing experiences related and to the processing of what they're learning, using explicit modeling, explicit teaching of the skills that readers call on. This is what good readers do, explicitly teaching and modeling for student what happens there. Having literacy-rich classrooms across the content area, so that books are part of how we learn everything within the school system. Scaffolding and providing support within the instructional class period, not in a pull-out model, and explicit feedback and coaching through a process called conferring. The school structure at the early literacy center would begin with full-day pre-kindergarten. That full-day pre-kindergarten would be all of the elementary schools within the Willow Ridge feeder pattern. As part of our pre-K consolidation, all of the pre-K students would go to one site for pre-kindergarten, and we would extend that to a full-day model. In the first year, we would pull all of the students at Ridgemont Elementary into the early literacy center at kindergarten, and we would offer an opt-in model for the other three schools, elementary schools, in the Willow Ridge feeder pattern. Additionally, we would use a portion of the space to implement the Early Intervention Academy for Special Education, which Dina will share more details about that with you in a few minutes. Another piece of this early intervention, or this early literacy academy, is the classroom structure. So, when students begin to struggle reading, we have models in place across the district to support students and to grow them. At the center, we'll be doing that within the classroom. So, in pre-kindergarten, we'll have a certified teacher paired with a para, with the ratio of two to 24 students, so two adults to 24 students. In kindergarten, we'll have two certified teachers in the classroom with 24 students, so that they're able to plan within the workshop model and service both the intervention and enrichment needs of students in the classroom.
And the Early Intervention Academy is modeled after a local private school that we have found lots of success, the RISE School. It's a little bit different, but we have spent some time there studying their model, getting to know what works there. And so, what we plan to do is, it's going to be an application-based program, and it's going to be offered for every student in the district. However, there'll be heavier weights for students from the Willow Ridge feeder pattern. It will be designed to be a three-year program, so students will come in, hopefully they'll stay for three years, and once they complete that three-year program and they leave, they will have the skills to successfully transition back to their home school, to kindergarten or first grade, depending on their age, into an inclusive environment. We're going to start our first year with three-year-olds, so we are expecting to, depending on the applications, we're expecting to have four classrooms with approximately 43-year-olds. 28 of those students will be students with disabilities, and in each classroom, we'll have three to four neurotypical peers, which could be siblings or could be employee children. The exciting thing about the academy is that it will follow the traditional calendar during the school year, but we'll also be operating in the summer, so we'll have 24 additional days of instruction that are part of just coming to the academy. And it's also a full-day program. So, for our three-year-olds to have a full-day program year-round, basically, and then the next year, we would take in another cohort, and the three-year-olds would move up, and so that we would have three and four-year-olds. And then, we hopefully, we want to jump back and bring two-year-olds in as well, so eventually, we'll have two-year-olds through five-year-olds over the next three to four years. So, we're very excited. The academy will be housed at the current Early Childhood Center that's attached to Ridgemont Elementary School. And I think that's about it for right now on this piece.
Yeah? Okay.
Okay. As we implement a new early literacy center, we know that professional learning is paramount to the success. In looking at our former endeavors around implementing new programming and looking at research across the nation, we understand the importance of like closing the circle on professional learning, ensuring that every stakeholder at all levels has training around what we'll be doing at the center. So, this diagram shows you a good example of how we might approach that. We would begin with training for our leaders and really helping them understand the system that would be in place at the early literacy center, and also the structure of supports that are there for that leader, all the way down to our parents at the early literacy center. From there, we would place emphasis on our instructional support team, which you've also heard called our teacher leaders, like instructional coaches, our interventionists, and we would work with them to make sure that they understood the system, the support mechanisms, and then what their role was in ensuring that balanced literacy occurs every day and that we're utilizing the co-teach model to the fullest extent. From there, we would work with our teachers and help them to get the training that they need to not only use the pedagogy of balanced literacy every day, but to really deepen their knowledge and understanding around how students acquire early literacy skills, and most importantly, providing them the time within professional learning communities to plan for the balanced literacy model and to look at student data through running records to ensure that they're able to make decisions and plan lessons that can engage students. Finally, we would develop a professional learning approach for our collaborative communities, for our parents and community, to make sure that they understand what we're doing at the early literacy center and that they know how they can support and how we'll be able to partner with them throughout the implementation of the early literacy center. The final thing is that within the master schedule, we want to be sure that every week there is time set aside, not just for professional learning communities with teachers, but also for ongoing learning, so that they're not having to use a conference time to go and learn more about what their students might need or about the instructional model. We want to make sure that there's dedicated time for their learning and planning at the
Okay. So, in looking at the leadership staff, we'll have an instructional officer, and the instructional officer will oversee the entire early literacy center, including all of the programs there. The early childhood dean would be responsible primarily for pre-K. The early childhood dean would be responsible primarily for pre-K and K and within that early literacy center and also oversee first grade, the instructional program for first grade, I'm sorry. The pre-K supervisor will have a dual role. She'll continue to supervise the pre-K programs at the center, but also oversee and support the pre-K programs throughout the school district. And then for the early intervention academy, we'll have a supervisor as well onsite that will oversee that program. And all three of the supervisors, the two supervisors and the dean will report to the instructional officer. In addition, the instructional support staff, some of these positions are familiar to you. We'll have, to support our teachers, we'll have an instructional coach for literacy, an instructional coach for math, and an instructional coach for special education. And primarily, as we work in the, to support those students in pre-K, K, and an inclusive model, that'll be the role of those coaches. To support the students for intervention, we'll have a literacy intervention teacher, which you're familiar with that. We'll also have a bilingual literacy intervention teacher, a full-time PBI, the Positive Behavior Intervention and Support Facilitator, a full-time there for that program, as well as an ESL Support Teacher, a Speech Pathologist, and a Playworks Coach. And all of these support staffs will be in place for the early literacy center. And then when we talk about the early intervention academy, one of the things I didn't mention earlier is that because of the students that were projected to take in this program, you know, we expect them to have some significant behavior challenges. So we'll be working, sliding away. We'll be working, not only will we have board-certified behavior analysis onsite, we plan to have two. Many of our families of children with autism and other significant behaviors have to go outside to private therapies for those things, and many of our children that are served in this feeder pattern, we recognize that's a barrier for them. So we'll have, as part of the program, BCBA's, and we'll have that type of therapy available for any student in the early intervention academy, as well as an occupational therapist, a speech-language pathologist, and then we'll have a social worker that will be supporting the students in the program, as well as, we've had some amazing offers of collaboration to support, you know, more of the community. U of H's social work interns, the U of H Clear Lake ABA interns, and so on.
Okay. Sure. Okay, and as with any implementation, we want to make sure that we consider what are the outcomes, what is it that we hope to accomplish with this implementation, and very clearly, what we hope to accomplish is the development of proficient readers within the feeder pattern. We want students to leave the early literacy center proficient in reading and ready to tackle, reading to learn wherever they go and whatever it is that they aspire to do. In order to ensure that we get proficient readers, there are some things that we need to monitor and track along the way. And the first and most important thing is to put student progress measures in place so that we know all along the way how well this is working, and so that when we determine that things may not be going as planned for a student, we have a support and an intervention there so that we can continue the positive work with students. We know that we can do that by looking at the number of students who are reading on or above grade level, and also by using our universal screener data along with some of our learning assessments that we have in place. The next piece is that we need to monitor the fidelity of implementation of the instructional model. For the early literacy center, we'll use a modified approach to the campus support team walkthroughs, and we'll be including the PBI metrics to make sure that we're looking at not just the academic implementation of the model, but the behavior implementation in that model. And then finally, we want to not just measure the parent engagement system in terms of the number of opportunities, but in terms of the outcomes that that system has for students, and not just students who are attending the early literacy center, but those siblings who are a little younger. We are working to identify both school year and summer opportunities for parents to bring their younger children in and begin some of the work that they need to do prior to students enrolling in pre-K, and we'll be supporting them along the way for that. These are draft metrics. We would be building out a comprehensive timeline of when we would look at this data, when we would be able to report on it, and how we would work with the campus leader and teachers in order to make sure that we do reach that outcome of developing proficient readers. In just a minute, Deanna is going to come up to talk about next steps around the early literacy center, but I feel like I might need to clarify one piece of information. We are planning or proposing to open the early literacy center onsite on the Ridgemont Elementary site, utilizing the Ridgemont Early Childhood Center for pre-K and Kinder along with the early intervention special education academy. We will continue to have Ridgemont students in grades one through five attending the same campus at Ridgemont and receiving instruction as we phase in the early literacy model. We were fortunate to get feedback from community members, and that feedback was really clear that they wanted the opportunity for students in that feeder pattern to have access to full-day kindergarten or pre-kindergarten, and also that they were a little concerned around the transportation of all of the kindergarten and first-grade students, and so they ask us to start small. And so what we're proposing here tonight is a redesign of the initial report that you So at this time, I'd like to close the presentation with next steps, and want to remind the board that we'll be back in April to share, to receive approval from the board. So at that time, we will have specific information associated with finalizing the staffing associated with the early literacy center, development of the early intervention academy application process, the outline for the kindergarten opt-in application, because again, although we're starting small with the Ridgemont community, we want to allow an opportunity for kindergarten students from the other three elementary, should they choose, to have the opportunity to come. We want to explore the family services that we can provide and connect with some community partners to really flesh that out and work together with the community to plan in that vein. And we also will be coming back to plan some specific literacy supports that would carry through the entire feeder pattern associated with middle school and high school. So at this time, we'll entertain any questions that you might have. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Zahiya Vedra, Dr. Hill, and Ms. Williams. We appreciate you not only coming and presenting to us this evening, but being very thorough for the community engagement piece of it and for being very thoughtful about how to intervene in this area. Before I take questions from the board members, I want to let our Meadows Place folks know that I'm going to move up the facilities master plan update to right after this so that you guys can hear it. Yes, and then you can go, and you don't have to stay for the whole thing and wait for us to get out of closed session and all that fun stuff. So I wanted to make that announcement so that you guys know that it'll come up next. Okay, questions from the trustees or comments? Mr. Rosenthal. Mrs. James.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for that presentation, and I saw on one of the very first slides that you talked about, 95% of the students can learn to read in an excellent way, and so I'd like to suggest that that be our goal, that 95% of the students that go into this program learn to read in an excellent way so that they can read to learn. So thank you for that. Thank you for bringing this to us. Thank you for identifying this as a root cause and a need in our community. I'm excited about it. But I'm having some confusion a little bit around the structure and the pieces involved. So I understand we have an early childhood center at Ridgemont Elementary, and I understand we have an elementary school, and then we have two new things, an early literacy center and another thing. It's called...
Academy, Special Education Academy.
Special Education Academy, but it has a different name.
Early Intervention.
Early Intervention Academy, okay. So I'm a little confused about which things are going away, which things are changing, and I guess I just don't quite understand, are the pre-K kids staying at the early childhood center? And we're adding to that and having more kids there, because we already have a lot of kids there, I thought? And then we've got another kindergarten program or a K-1, maybe starting at just kindergarten that's going to be at Ridgemont Elementary? And I need some help understanding what you're saying, please.
So we would be placing the early intervention special education academy at the current Ridgemont Early Childhood Center. So that would take up around 65% of the space there. That's an estimate. The remaining space would take part of the pre-K consolidation that's going to Ridgemont Elementary, and the remaining, the other pre-K classrooms that won't fit at the Ridgemont Early Childhood Center would use space within Ridgemont Elementary, along with the kindergarten classrooms. Since the kindergartners at Ridgemont Elementary are part of the early literacy center, that relieves some of the classroom use that Ridgemont Elementary would be using, and so we'll be able to use about a hallway and a half there.
Okay, so we're not doing the birth-through-three program that we were doing at the ECC anymore? Is that...
That's at the Ed complex. That's at the education complex.
Okay, so that's been moved. That's already been gone.
It will be gone.
It will be gone. It's moving to a different location.
Ed complex, because we have some zero to, we have some classrooms already at the Ed complex, and so that will free up some space as well.
Okay, so that helps a little bit. Addie, are you caught up to the structure?
So, are you...
I have some more questions, but I want to, I thought we should understand what the organization before we got into the details. So I'm...
So just to answer your question, Ms. James, I understand that the early childhood center will be used for the early intervention, for special education, for pre-K and early childhood program. And then any of the remaining will go into the Ridgemont Elementary School for pre-K and kindergarten, and that's it?
That's the only person.
Okay, all right, okay. So I'm clear. I got my little, we need a whiteboard.
Okay. I agree, I need a flowchart. Okay.
Go ahead.
All right, so then we are, I heard you say at one point that we're phasing this in. So that means that we're phasing it in pre-K kindergarten, we're just focusing on Ridgemont students and then others that want to opt-in. What do you mean by phasing it in?
So year two, we would expand to first grade.
Why don't you start with year one?
Okay, I'm sorry. So year one, we're going to work with our pre-K children and our kindergarten children. And as you described, we would afford for some opt-in options for kindergarten students who may choose to come to the center with an application process. In year two, then our kindergarten cohort would move into first grade, our pre-K cohort would move into Kinder, and we would take on a new pre-K cohort and a new cohort for our early intervention academy. And over the course of that year, we would continue to partner with the community and showing success with the model. We may want to expand opportunities for us to build out an entire center at that point or continue to work with the current model and continue to partner with the community.
Okay, and I heard you say that we're looking at a full-day pre-K, which I thought we had over there anyway. So we're continuing with a similar model to that with the flip, the head start flip thing and all that?
Right, well, we do have a full-day pre-K for the kids at Ridgemont, but the kids from Ridgate with the consolidation plan for pre-K are anticipated to come to Ridgemont Early Childhood Center. So they would be afforded the full-day pre-K option, which they're not afforded right now.
Okay, so the other pre-Ks at the other three campuses, if they, do they all have them? Only Ridg...
Only Ridgate.
So pre-K would open to all three of those campuses, and it would all be at Ridgemont Elementary, and it would all be full-day?
Full-day.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. And then on slide nine, you talked about an organization structure, and I missed, the instructional officer is in charge of the early childhood center, in charge of the early literacy center. I didn't quite understand. If you could explain this slide again, please, or just the start of it, I might catch on.
Right, the instructional officer would oversee the entire early literacy center program. So all...
It's going to be between the two buildings?
Right.
Sort of a overlap, okay.
So the Ridgemont Elementary would have a principal. Our early literacy center, as we've described it, will have an instructional officer who will oversee the programming, and their direct reports would be the early childhood dean, the supervisor for the early childhood program, and the early intervention academy supervisor. First fed.
Okay, thank you, that.
And then all of the support staff and the staff associated with the early literacy center.
Right, which I saw that on the other slide, so that was good. Okay, well, thank you. I think that answers my questions, and I really appreciate the goal of 95% of our kids reading in an excellent way, so I'm looking forward to, I guess, hearing more about it as time goes on.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Ms. Helliger.
Well, we all know that without a good foundation, the structure would just crumble, and that's what's happening as our children get older, with not being able to excel and matriculate properly without having that good foundation when it comes to literacy. So I'm all for the program. I just still have a little clarity on some questions. Thank you, Ms. James, for asking those questions, but I just want to understand the phase-in approach piece of it. I'm still unclear with that, because I'm looking at the documents around the data itself around, I guess, our literacy rates and the percentages and how they went down in all those four schools, except for one, which was Ridgemont, where we've seen some steady growth, but on the other schools, Blue Ridge, Briargate, and Ridgate, we've seen, you know, some declines, mostly declines in those areas. So when we talk about phasing in, if we have an opt-in approach to, so pre-K is for everybody, right? Make sure I'm clear, some of this is just a sanity check. And then, and then kindergarten and first grade is where? Just for my purposes, is where?
Well, in year one, kindergarten would remain with Ridgemont Elementary.
For everybody.
For, no, just for Ridgemont students, and the first graders at Blue Ridge would remain at Blue Ridge, the first graders at Briargate would remain there, and the first graders at Ridgate would remain there. So the phase-in for the early literacy center would again be the pre-K, as you said, and kindergarten. The kindergartners from Ridgemont would be part of our early literacy center, and we would provide an opt-in option for the kindergartners from the other three elementaries through an application process, should they choose to attend kindergarten at the early literacy center.
Okay, so that's the part where I need, I guess, more understanding with this opt-in application piece of it, because if the numbers say this, it's hard for me to understand the application piece of it. Why is it an option? But I understand we've got to start small, so I'm concerned that we're still going to have such a major gap, possibly a major gap at some of those schools. And so then, while others are at the literacy program, what are we doing to support the other children that remain at that main campus?
Part of the goal of the early literacy center, obviously, the primary role is to invest in our children so that they can, you know, become proficient readers early and have a strong foundation. But the other goal of the literacy center is really to become a lab school and a place where our other teachers can come and learn and grow along with what we're doing at the early literacy center. So that is also something that we're working on so that we can really implement with fidelity the balanced literacy model and work with teachers to be intentional about their teaching of reading in the early grades. As I said, the application process is there as a choice. So when I say application, if we, we'll take based on the number of additional seats that we can man at the Ridgemont Early Childhood Center. And this was, you know, a request from the community that we really start small and really dialogue with the community about the benefits of the center, because I think that the community was, took, was hesitant to move kids from all three without any choice and have them all go to the early literacy center. So I think that there's an opportunity for us to continue to dialogue with the community with our phase-in so that they can see the benefits, they can come and... with our phase-in, so that they can see the benefits, they can come and visit the school, they can see what kind of reading instruction children are getting there, and feel a level of comfort to choose that option, should they, should they wish to choose that over time.
So, so this is our phase-one approach, Dr. Dupree? So meaning that we'll go through the phase of starting this literacy program, but in my mind, I'm thinking, as, as we talk with the community there, that we are really looking into putting all of our kids there at maybe phase-two or phase-three, long-term, short-term, I don't know what the, what the five-year span, three to, three to five years, is where we have all of our kids going there, because that's what it's there for. And the data, the data's there. And so I just, I don't want this large gap to continue, I'm sorry, don't put it there, large gap, um, at those other schools, because I didn't choose to opt-in, or I didn't meet the application checklist, I mean, um, number, I was number one oh two, and you only had the spots for one oh one.
Yes, let me-
That concerns me. I mean, this really concerns me. And so I know this is a very difficult situation, and come from a parent who's, you know, some of you all know this story, when, when I, when I adopted my, I'm getting emotional, because this is very hard. My, so when I came from, my son came to me in first grade, he didn't know how to read. We spent two and a half years trying to figure it out with this school district. And so there was such a big gap for him. So I'm just concerned about these kids. I didn't, I didn't even do all that, but I'm concerned about these children. These numbers are just horrible.
We share that concern, frankly, and that's why we're proposing this solution. But I think when we had the community meeting, we were talking about going full bore in one big step. But they, they really gave us good feedback about that, as we've often discussed in the boardroom. The district, we have learned over time, we need to start smaller. But after the community meeting, my next question to Deanna and her team was, because really, if you're going to be honest, it's not just the kinder in first grade who don't get to get in the program, it's the second through twelfth graders who are already in the feeder pattern who are struggling. So we're not, this, we're talking tonight about this startup seed, but we're also, they're also having extensive discussions about, do we need to begin teaching more intervention reading intensively at Willeridge High School, at McCullough Middle School? How do we address the needs of the first through fifth graders at the elementary school? So this is a much broader conversation. And as you mentioned earlier, I do think this is the first step for these children that would be in the program at Ridgemont. But we are also, this year two or three may not be bringing all the kids to Ridgemont. Based on our work with the community and how the program develops, this is a program, if it goes well, we could model it at the other schools in that area and, and throughout the district over time, because we have struggling readers throughout the district. It's prevalent in this feeder pattern, which is why we're starting there. But we believe this is, we could probably, over in a very short amount of time, replicate this. But I do want to assure you that we share your concern for all children in the feeder pattern, and we are looking at other intensive interventions to help them, so moms and dads and children don't have to struggle for two to three years to get caught up and back on grade level.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. So I definitely want to make sure that we partner with, I heard some consultants that will be coming in to, to help support us. Want to be able to partner with other, um, community organizations to help with this as well. I know, we've talked about that in the past as well. So there's, there's, I know a couple of groups that are looking for, you know, opportunities to support and read, I mean, to support and help. And I think with the Early Literacy Center being, starting next year, this is a way for them to support, support the development there in that area. So I, I'm just excited about the fact that we're doing this, but just don't want to lose sight of the other kids that we've got going on there. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Helliger. Mr. Rice.
Thank you very much for a very good presentation. I just had two quick questions. One, on our full day of early childhood, is there a parent engagement piece with that?
Yes, sir, with the entire Early Literacy Center. You know, we know that we cannot just advocate and work through the literacy process with kids during the school day. It's going to take reaching out to the community, working with parents, with our English language learner parents as well, and helping them learn English. So it, it, it will be a community effort and a collaborative community project as well, with wraparound services and literacy work with the families as well as the children.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you. I've got a whole bunch of questions. So how well does the universal screener track with STAR?
Well, there's actually, there's a, the universal screener is a diagnostic assessment that really gives teachers information about what are the, what reading skills the students are lacking, so that they can begin to work specifically in those areas. But there's also a report, once the kids matriculate through, that is a report that predicts, at a given point in time, given a student's score on the screener, what their likelihood is, if they're on a trajectory to be successful on STAR, on the, on a state assessment. So there is alignment with the, the data from the universal screener and the STAR.
So you do see correlation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
There's a specific report that gives us information about that.
Okay. You used the term balanced literacy. And I know, well, I think I remember, let's put it that way, when we talked about switching from reading recovery to the new literacy model, I thought that was the model that was going to be in all our schools. And that the term they used.
We, we are working on balanced literacy. As a matter of fact, we have a balanced literacy cadre of teachers that we work with, an external partner, a consultant with. And they've gone through a series of training this year. We, when we moved from reading recovery, what we engaged in are, are LLI kits and the LLI intervention model. And that, we are in year two of that, and we'll, we will be providing the board an update on how we're progressing with that intervention piece, this, later this spring for the board.
Okay. So now I'm going to put you on the spot. So how confident are you that this is going to give us the desired result?
I'm very confident. I'm very confident. I'm confident because we're going to be working with very intentional professional learning for our teachers. We're going to be working with the oversight, the scope of responsibility for the instructional officer is going to be appropriate, because it's going to, I, I think that's the, the strength of the phase-in model, fidelity of the instructional model. The fact that we'll have two certified teachers in the classroom with twenty-four children, both who are extensively trained in the balanced literacy model, and the support staff that comes with it, we're working with kids within the school day. And I think it's a, it's a genuine opportunity for us to really partner with that community who has really, you know, shown the desire that they want to partner with us, so that we can begin to, to build that literacy as part of the, the family culture as well. So I am confident that we can be successful with this model. I think that, as Dr. Dupree mentioned, because we're starting small and we're working very intently through the process, we're going to get the results that, that we want to see.
Okay. One of the reasons that I bring that up is, very few of you were here, probably seven, eight, nine years ago, when the idea came up to extend a lot of those feeder patterns, extend elementary school through sixth grade. And, you know, there were all kind of lofty goals with that, too, and I think it failed. So one of the, one of the things that I would like to get some assurance on is that you've gone back and looked at what went wrong, why that didn't work, you know, before we go into this. So I would appreciate if you could, could take a look at that. The other thing is, we, as we heard from one of the audience members, we're thirteen million dollars in the hole. And while these are very lofty goals, I think it's important, I think it's important for society that every, everyone knows how to read and read well, because you can't do anything else without reading. How are we going to pay for this? Are there grants available? Are there other offsets that, that, are there savings we can, we can see, you know, going this route? I thought originally, I think when we originally heard this, that, that there was going to be some offsets. But it doesn't sound like it. It sounds like it's, to me, it's, it's a little confusing. I mean, honestly, with opting in and opting out, it's, if you're really that confident, it seems like this whole thing could be the pilot for the rest of the district. And so, I don't know, I'm just a little leery of that. I understand that, that, you know, we, we want to listen to the community, that's very important. But if we're really that confident that this is going to work, you know, I think we need to do this in the most efficient manner.
Let, let me address that aspect of it, because we've, we've been very tightly aligned with the budget development process throughout this. So we're actually, by pairing the pilot back a little bit, it's been better for the budget. The original cost was close to two and a half million. But the thing, as you're going to hear in a few minutes when we do the full-blown budget process, is from the beginning, as we started the process with the Budget and Compensation Committee, and with district leaders, everybody from principals to people in, in this building, the conversation has been, yes, we need to reduce the budget. We have to be more efficient, but we also have to continue advancing toward achieving our goals. So in many cases, as you mentioned, we have dug deeper, so that we can still move forward in key areas that address our goals. So this is not, it's really, to me, in my view, it's an ideal situation, where we have identified through the board's goals, these are the things that are important, and therefore we have to find more money to save, so that we can keep driving our work forward. Because otherwise, if we don't, if we're just in cutting mode, then we're going to stall out and we're never going to reach our goals. So I'm very proud of the effort, and again, you're going to hear some of the outcomes of that, I mean, in a few minutes. But I feel com, very comfortable that we're, that we can afford to do this, and your point is well-taken, that it, and I do see it as a pilot for the district, even starting smaller at Ridgemont Elementary. I think, I think part of the confusion has been, we had originally sent you a document that said one thing, and then we changed that. And even though the opt-in conversation, we're using that term loosely, but I think the reality is, there's not going to be many seats for students from the other schools. It's going to be predominantly a Ridgemont program, unless we decide we want to bring in two or three portable buildings and really open up classrooms for kids from other schools, and we may choose to do that. You know, we may say, let's just bring in some portables, so we can invite, you know, maybe up to forty or sixty kids from the other schools who may choose whose parents want them to do it. But that's, that's what we mean by the opt-in, is basically, at this point, filling vacant seats at Ridgemont. But we may recommend creating some classrooms dedicated to the opportunity for those children. But where, that's where we're going to look at the budget even more carefully and make sure that that is a good way to start.
Okay. I have one, one other comment, based on what you just said, and it just went, okay, I'll come back to it, may.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. George.
Thank you, Madam President. Actually, course to us, one of my questions, it has been explained well, and, and obviously I share Addie's concern. When you look at that slide, it is, I'm glad we are looking into it, we are, we have some plan. Today, you're presenting, we have, I mean, because I had conversation with the principals, high school and middle school, they said one of the major problems they are facing is, many children come to their classrooms, don't know how to read. And so this is, we, I'm hoping this is going to address that issue. So we talk about phasing in. So we are obviously phasing out something, too, right? The whatever, I mean, I, I didn't understand the fact that what happened to the children, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade there? Whatever happened to them?
They will remain at that campus, and we will continue to work with them as we have. And I think that teachers on that campus will also get the benefit of coming in and observing the, the balanced literacy model in action as we work with the students. And certainly, we can partner with, with the campus and work through some professional development pieces alongside, to really shore them up, so that their classroom improves as well, their classroom instruction associated with literacy improves as well.
Okay. So, so bottom line is, we are going to make Ridgemont eventually a full early childhood development center? Is that, do I understand it correct?
I, I would say that we would continue to partner with the community in an ongoing conversation, show success with the current pilot model, so that we could look at, what are our options? Because we know that the need is critical, we want to be able to service a larger number of students, so what would that mean? And what different paradigms could we look at, so that we could address the need across the feeder pattern?
Absolutely, thank you. And I, I, I understand, I mean, I always a big supporter of community feedback. End of the day, you know, parents understand better what is good for their children, and I respect that, whatever. So we are giving that opportunity, and I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. George. Mrs. James.
Thank you, Mrs. Tassan. I just want to pick up on something that a couple of my colleagues were hitting on, and that is, and you just said it to Ms. Saavedra, and that is, that the need is critical. I don't think any of us can deny that. So with that concept in mind, and with that thought in mind, the, it occurs to me that possibly planting the seed in the other elementary schools is an important part of this process, partially so they can understand the need, and partially so that we can build on that if we try to expand this program and move it forward. So I had sent in a question earlier about, are we going to try to recruit or recommend students for this literacy program from, from all the, from all the campuses? It seems like everyone at Ridgemont is going to be in, so that's not a question. But it seems like maybe there might be some key people to recruit from those other campuses to help to plant the seed. So I see you nodding, and I'm, I'm guessing that's an affirmative, that you had that thought in mind. The other thing I'd like to share, and I mentioned this in an email the other day to Dr. Dupree, but I haven't had a chance to talk to him, is when I was visiting down in Galveston ISD a couple of weeks ago, I visited the Moody Early Childhood Center. And they're starting, they have a district-wide early childhood center similar to this. I don't know so much if their focus is literacy, but it's very likely that it is. They have a public-private partnership that funds this, this, this center, and they've repurposed a, a building essentially for it. And they have a, a program that maybe is in its third year or so now, and I, I think they serve around two hundred students. But the concept seems to me to be very similar to what you're talking about. So I'm just mentioning that. I have a little bit of information, and I told Dr. Dupree that I would share it with him. So perhaps that might be something to look at as another model or another idea. But I do feel it's important that if we really mean for this to impact the entire feeder pattern, as Ms. Helliger was saying, that we need to plant some seeds in those other elementary schools to gain interest, and then figure out what the obstacles are to participation, so that we can help the students. Because in the end, we need to have them reading, and, and we can't, there can't be barriers. We've got to, we've got to break down the barriers that are keeping us from that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Mr. Rosenthal, did you remember your?
Yes, I did. I think it would be really helpful if y'all could furnish some diagrams. I would really like to see, you know, what the plans are, where the capacity is, you know, you talked about hallways open and this kind of stuff. I think that would be helpful.
Absolutely. And when we come back to you in April, we'll be front-loading a, a report that really outlines the, the modified model that we've shared with you today. And we can certainly share some, some diagrams that make it a little easier to understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Ms. Helliger.
Just one last comment. That's, that's a good one, Mr. Rosenthal. But have we thought also about just kind of thinking outside of the box, since, you know, we're getting to kindergarten, our kids aren't reading and whatnot? I remember when my youngest was younger, you know, he was a baby, I looked for daycares that provided a certain level of education and training and whatnot, and reading. that provided a certain level of education and training and whatnot, and reading fundamentals, and that's how I picked them. I mean, you know, but I was able to pay for him to do that, right? So looking around in that particular community, the daycares that are there, is there something that we could partner with? Some of those daycares, provide them a certain level of curriculum of some sort, you know, I don't know, endorse a couple of daycares, FBIC endorsed, I mean, that could be loosely, you know? But something like that, so that we know that they're, they're helping support the community that, and the children are going to go to these elementary schools. So just something, you know, you know, to think about. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Heliger. So most of my questions were asked, I just have a couple. And I will, I will center them around the, the Early Intervention Academy, since that's something that I have some experience with. I am very happy that we're doing this, because I think it, it presents an inclusive model from the earliest ages, which not only will help support our students, but will help our teachers, because we are preparing our kiddos. So thank you for that. When we first started talking about this, we talked about possibly making this a, a district charter school, which opened us up for possibly some grant money. Are we still considering this? If not, why not? And is there grant money available?
Well, for, for this school, for this, for this first year, we did explore the charter grant, and based on the information we received, and the competent, the, all the competitive grants for charter, particularly the way that that, that grant is structured, is there's more weight for a more, a larger amount of kids that are in tested grades. So we didn't feel like we would get that grant with all of the, the information we received from TEA. But we did explore another grant that we have applied for, that's for students with autism, that is part of the legislature and, and part of some of the Texas monies, that we have applied for that. And if we do get that grant, it's two million dollars over two years. And so we would be able to use that, those monies to support students with autism, as well as students with other cognitive disabilities. The grant's a little bit funny about how it says how we can use things, so we'll have to, if we get the grant, which we really feel good about it, that we'll be able to go forward. We've also looked at the benefits of a charter compared to a program. And I'm not going to say that a charter might not be something we want to do in the future, but for the timelines, the grants, all the things going on, we just felt like it would be better to start with this type of program, get it going, and then if the future presents to do a charter and open it up to, you know, other, other districts, do different things, we certainly want to look at that.
Okay. Well, that, that's good information. Hopefully, we will, we'll get that grant. And my thought process is, you know, replication, and is it easier to replicate the program, or is it easier to replicate the charter? Because, you know, we don't want to focus on one feeder pattern, we want to make sure all our kids have this opportunity. I do want to highlight something that you said, that the grant monies are weighted in favor of the testing grades.
Unfortunate.
I'm going to try to say this as nicely as I possibly can, because that's the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard. Because every educator knows that the way that you build up a student's education and capacity is by investing in their foundation. So I think that TEA, perhaps, especially in the area of special education, could learn a few things about how we go about investing in our students. So that's disappointing, but it sounds like we just.
And that was, and that was specific to the, that was specific to the charter? To the charter grant?
Yeah.
The autism grant wasn't, you know, as specific to that?
Okay. So my other, only other question is, as you guys know, the RISE model, the RISE School of Houston only employs one full-time therapist. I'm not going to ask you if you know what it is, I'm going to tell you what it is. The only full-time therapist employed is a music therapist, and I didn't hear anything about music therapy in this program. So we can talk about it later, but I want to throw out there that there's a reason that the music therapist is the only full-time therapist employed by the RISE School, because there are so many things, as you guys know, about music, that pours into language, literacy, OT, all of it. So I would like for us to consider employing a music therapist, especially, it could be especially helpful, not even for the kids in the Early Intervention Academy, but in the literacy program as well, because we all know what, how good music is. Where's Mr. Drew? Is he even in here? That was my fine arts plug. But we all know, I mean, my daughter was signing and singing before she was speaking, so that's why it's critically important. And we all know what it does for cognitive development. So I just want to make sure that we're thinking about that as we, as we build this program out. Thank you all very much. Okay. And we are going to move up our facilities master plan update. So, Mr. Leopold, I think that means you, you're probably up. And that way, our, our Meadows Place residents can hear our presentation before we go into closed session.
Right. Beth, did you have any introductory comments on this one? I would point out that you've got a stack of documents that has been provided to you, kind of the, all the things he's going to visit with you about tonight. We've given you hard copy versions of this. And I think we're actually going to begin with PBK tonight.
Okay.
So there's multiple layers to this process. I'll turn it over to Oscar to begin.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes, what we'd like to do is, I'd like to call Todd Spoor up to go ahead and go through the presentation to provide a brief, provide a brief overview of the facility condition assessment approach, the key milestones, and the work that's been accomplished to date, which has been quite a bit of work that's, that's been done at this point. Also want to go ahead and just clarify that all of the work associated with BON 2014 is either being completed or will be completed this summer, because obviously, we're bringing some to the board for approval tonight. But the foundation for this particular assessment was the priorities three, four, and five items that were not funded in BON 2014. So that, that information was turned over to PBK. They did some analysis on that before they ever went and visited any of the campuses. And so with that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to Todd.
It's just not very loud, maybe?
A little bit better?
That's better, thank you.
Okay. Sorry about that. And so, I know time is of the essence, so we'll try to go through some of this, and there are a few slides I would like to spend a couple minutes on. So I'm going to kind of go through a little bit of the primary objectives that we set out forth when we first came engaged with this particular process. Some of the things that we really wanted to help you identify, again, this is Fort Ben's Long Range Master Plan, and we're here to help you facilitate that, finding those critical lifecycle items that need to be addressed over the near and long-term future of the district to keep, keep operations of the existing buildings intact. Also to, as you know, we've undertake, undertaking the updating of the new ed specs, revised ed specs, I should say, as well as construction standards. So those processes are going on at the same time, looking for those educational adequacy as well as parity across the district lines. And then at the, at the end of the day, culminating prioritization of, of list of deficiency items, whether they're educational adequacy items or lifecycle items, and then having cost in there for everybody to be able to analyze and to know what the, the game plan is moving forward. Some of the things that we've done already to date is collecting that data. We've done a lot over the last few months, working with the principals, working with the staff. We distributed and, and received questionnaires from all the principals and key stakeholders as we moved through the process. We've actually followed up and interviewed and conducted interviews with all the principal, campus principals throughout this effort, as well as holding mini-focus group meetings, that's with all your department heads across the board, from maintenance and facilities even into curriculum and education. Each of our sites, each of your sites, we're also actually walked by the site assessment team, and as a quick glance, you can see the different disciplines that we use to, to walk your facilities, from looking at some of the life safety and security items, from front entries and cameras and card readers. We also had our civil engineers walking your site paving, your site utilities, site detention and drainage type issues. We had our building envelope professionals walking the outside of your buildings, looking at the, the roofs, obviously, but also the walls and windows with the, the rain and the issues that we've had here recently. Those were pretty, pretty exposing as we went around the district and looked at some of the issues there. Architecturally and structurally, we looked at the finishes, code issues, if there were any, as we looked around structural issues. I'll have to say right now that on a, on a normal district this size, we might go look at five or six buildings. We, we actually had our structural engineers looking at close to fifty of your facilities. This is a, this is an area of a lot of moving and expansive soils, and boy, there's a lot of that showing up in your, in your buildings, some, especially some of your older ones. Some of these were very cosmetic, but there are a, a few or a number of them that we, we have pretty significant scopes of work to help you stop those kinds of problems. We also had our mechanical engineers looking at the HVAC and exhaust and just building infrastructure, as well as our electrical engineers, our plumbing engineers. We even had our technology guys looking at the technology. I will say this right now about your technology, well, those guys are, the department here is in pretty good shape. Those guys have a list already waiting for us, and as we went around looking at the, at the particular campuses, you can see the district has a good start on, on their technology. Yes, there's going to be some just capital, you know, influx that needs to go, infusion that needs to go back into that program, but they're in, they have got a, a pretty good start on where they need to be. Food service was another one that we didn't, don't have in-house, so we had an outside consultant looking at kitchen, cafeteria needs, those kinds of things. And then obviously, our sports and athletic group went around and looking at the, the tracks and whatnot. All of this in conjunction with your folks in the district, with Oscar's team and, and everybody involved. Some of the things that we're trying to do to help organize this effort is putting those in the priorities. As, as we move through this, kind of looking at this new bond that you may be looking at, the priority ones and the priority twos will be the ones you'll be the most concerned about. These are priority one items that we like to try to keep at that legal, high life safety and critical replacement items that need to be replaced in the next couple of years. Priority twos are those instructional curriculum needs, also lifecycle needs three to five. So as you look at this, priority ones and twos constitute about a five-year outlook to kind of help you put it in perspective, whereas priority threes start coming in line five to six, five, excuse me, six to ten years down the line, or just things right now that, hey, we'd really like to do it, but we know it's, it's, again, this is called a long-range master plan. So we're trying to help you space and trying to organize this in a way that you can manage that as you move forward. And then priority fours are ten-plus-year-type lifecycle items, but also just future anticipated needs that needed to be captured as we, as we went through this process. In a quick summary, eighty-five different principals responded to surveys, we had fifteen-plus focus groups, we had ninety-four facilities that we walked. That was just shy of about twelve million square feet total, fifty-plus hours of tabletop and line-by-line review meetings that we held with different district personnel. As you know, Engage to Learn is a part of our team in helping us with the elementary, middle school, and high school specifications. The elementary specs are in pretty good shape. Middle school's actually in really good shape. We're still defining a few things on the high school to be able to do some last-minute adjustments there. And then our construction standard technical design guideline update is still in progress. Twenty-five facilities is the aver- excuse me, twenty-five years is your average age of your facilities. It's kind of interesting to see, yes, we have thirty-one that are under the nineteen or twenty-year outlook, but you have forty-five of your campuses right now that are twenty-plus years old, and some of them, twelve of them, are forty-plus years old. Just a point of reference here, on, on average, fifteen to twenty years is where you're going to start really seeing some of the lifecycle updates, whether it's finishes, whether it's roofs, whether it's HVAC, those kind of common operational needs. And so you've got a pretty good amount of your facilities, either just hitting that twenty-year mark for its first time, or even the forty-year mark, which is basically the second time some of these components are needing to, some attention. The three buckets that we tried to detail and organize the database in are current deficiencies. Those are just a nice way of saying, those are the P1s and P2s that are lifecycle, those are the operational needs. Lifescale is the P3s and P4s, so those kind of set you the stage for your existing buildings. And then we've also been capturing the educational adequacy focus as coming out of the ed spec effort as we speak. To give you just a few kind of ideas of what some of the things that we've captured under the deficiency, current deficiencies, well, these are the life cycles, the ones and the twos right now. A lot of, a lot of deficiencies were, are going to be in and around the exterior envelope, whether it's from the roofs, some of the older windows, some of these older buildings have hollow, hollow metal frames, they're rusting out, single-glazed inefficiency windows with the hurricane that we just experienced not too recently. It has exposed a little bit of some issues with some of the outside exterior walls, so we've been capturing those items as we've walked across your district. Site improvements, for the biggest, for the most part, it's a lot of sidewalk, again, those expansive soils, so there's a lot of cracking sidewalks, a lot of, or shouldn't say a lot, but a few paving, parking lots that need some attention, those kinds of items kind of jump out. Technology, again, is really what we've captured thus far, some of the, some of the basic stuff on the site at the, each site, again, they are creating their own list of infrastructure needs that our folks are working with, so that's a little different effort going on at the same time. Architecturally, I already commented about the structural flooring, painting, those kinds of things you'll see in the, as a P1 and P2. Mechanical equipment, absolutely, kind of getting the HVAC back up to par, looking at this more of a holistic replacement item, in other words, some of your older, more inefficient type of systems. We did not price just the components to be put back in the same shape, we priced those older inefficiency systems to be replaced with new energy-efficient systems. So, so you'll see some of those types of scopes of work coming on play. Electrical systems, plumbing, life and safety, it's, it's really just kind of keeping up with the card readers and adding a few more here and there. A lot of your secured vestibules have been handled in the last spawn, so there's a couple updates and renovations in there, but for the most part, you've got a pretty good handle on that. Some intercom needs and things like that kind of jump out as some of the life safety and security items. Child nutrition, again, a lot of need there, a lot of the older facilities.
Todd?
Yes, sir?
You might, I don't know that we necessarily need you to go through each of these on all, because that's a lot of stuff on these two.
Yes, sir. No problem. No problem. So bottom line for the current deficiencies, when it comes to just right now, again, this is preliminary, we're looking at priority one totals for these type of items, around two, two-hundred-and-twenty-four million. Priority two totals, about three-hundred million. When you get over to the educational adequacy, these are some of the things that are jumping out of the revised ed specs and how they compare to your existing buildings, and I don't necessarily need to go through them line by line, but just know that right now, we are still vetting some of the high school, but we're in pretty good shape with the elementary and middle. And so those totals right now for the educational adequacy components are priority ones at seventy-six million and priority two at a hundred-and-seventy-eight million. So with these totals, I will just say in close that these, these do include soft costs as well as inflation for priority twos, and you don't see the threes, but in the database, it's all, it's all in there inclusive. So with that, I'll answer any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Spoor. Do we have questions from the trustees on this portion? Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Mr. Spoor. Very nice report. On the inflation, how, what's the inflation that you used and for how long?
Well, right now, we're carrying about anywhere from six to seven, excuse me, and that's compounded, pardon me. For priority twos, it'll be the three-year period. For priority threes, it will be the middle of the road between six and ten, so we're compounding it to eight years, trying to hit that center line in between each phase for right now, just as a placeholder. And as we move forward, we can get more detailed with that.
And you've got soft costs in there as well?
Right now, we're carrying twenty-five percent, and that's broken down in, in multiple different ways, but the overall is, is about twenty-five percent. Yes, sir.
And did I hear you say that you'd looked at replacing systems in some of these deficiencies?
That is correct. And not to just replace that system because it wasn't the right system, but as it hit its lifecycle, that's where we're placing that in the long-range plan, not to be replaced in like kind, but to be replaced in a system that's more efficient.
Yeah, as opposed to just components?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Berdine?
Yes, sir. I don't know if I heard this correct or not, but did you say you, you did walk every campus, or somebody did walk every campus?
Yes, sir. From the curbs to the outlets.
Okay. So every campus was covered?
And even your supports.
Okay. So all of our facilities?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berdine. Mrs. James?
So my question has to do with the, what you referred to as the educational adequacy piece, and I was wondering if you could explain how that was defined? And then, I guess it is a certain percentage of this, of these numbers, I'm trying to, is there a certain percentage that's a rule of thumb that we use, or is it a, how do you?
It's still a work in progress, of course. But yes, ma'am.
We could go on forever, but so how do you, how do you figure that out?
Okay. So these were.
Or what's included, I guess, is what I want to know.
So, so the bottom line is, as the ed specs became more clear and in focused, and those, all of those meetings were happening and more defined, we took that information basically from a space-by-space kind of characteristic, and then looked at the existing facilities for each campus. And we're still in that process, but what we're doing is taking the new ed spec and looking at what is being, what is being offered at the existing campus that supports that. And where it doesn't support that, we're either going in and recommending renovations to, to support those spaces, or to, to support those spaces, or possibly even providing additions. Again, don't know the priorities of those. Right now, when it comes to the individual spaces and what you see captured in these numbers, our best first guess at where we had either subpar spaces, not even there, that are now in the new ed spec, or substantially or grossly undersized spaces have been ranked as the ones and the twos, and everything else right now sitting as threes and fours. But we are looking at that as a holistic. Once we get all of that defined, as well as the lifecycle, we are then trying to, in the process of trying to see how we can go in and actually tackle a campus at once, get it done, and not be going there for the next 10 years, every year, trying to do something, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Mr. James. Okay. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
You bet.
All right. Thank you. Our next phase of this report will be delivered to you by Scott Leopold from Cooperative Strategies. And Scott will give you an update or provide an update on our, on our facility's master planning process, and specifically the options that the Facility Steering Committee has been working on from this data, other data points, and from feedback in the community to shape the options that we'll be providing to you this evening and then sharing with the community in April for feedback. And I just want to really stress or point out the fact that these are options, and so this point in the process is to discuss these items with the community and get feedback on them. They're, of course, as you know, board members, not decisions or recommendations at this point. So I'll turn it over to Scott.
Madam President, Dr. Dupree, members of the board. It's nice to be back. I want to just kind of start with the overall process. We started with our, our features conference a few months ago. We began to develop background data. We have the PASA data, the enrollment projections. We've gotten the PBK data as it's come in. We have gone out to the public and we collected some high-level feedback around some educational framework, and we've been working with the steering committee. We've had a total of, very tall. We've had a total of, of, of three or four meetings with the committee now, four. And our last meeting with the committee was last Thursday, so I want to stress that this is also a work in progress, and you have a giant stack of stuff in front of you that, that may be evolving over the coming weeks as we go to the community next week. So that's where we are now, and like Beth mentioned earlier, this is the beginning of the options process. We'll be collecting feedback from the community, vetting that feedback back to this steering committee before we come to you with recommendations. Just some, a little bit of detail here, the options are organized by high school feeder pattern. If you recall, when we did this five years ago, we kind of had three different planning areas because the feeder patterns were kind of jumbled at that point in time, and now we have much more concise feeder patterns. So all of the information, the options that you're going to see are going to be organized by a high school feeder pattern. Do keep in mind that we do have a little bit of overlap between some of the feeder patterns because some boundaries don't feed 100% perfect, and I'll go through those kind of in detail. We also have a couple district-wide high school options for consideration as well. Oh. There we go. Is that better? As far as the, the assessment data, we have physical condition and lifecycle data, which are going to be the primary driver for facilities' actions. So we're looking at, at the, the actual physical condition of the existing facilities. We're looking educational adequacy issues as a consideration once a facility is identified as needing capital investment. So we're not using adequacy to drive a decision. We're using physical condition to drive the decision, and then once the decision is made, we'll consider that adequacy. Community feedback is going to be collected on major actions such as new campus or new schools, campus additions, major renovations or consolidations. We've got a lot of facilities, we're not going to talk, talk about in the community, is it going to be a minor renovation or lifecycle cost? We're going to let those, those kinds of easy decisions be driven by the actual condition of the facilities. So as far as data goes, our, our current enrollment includes net transfers in and out, and I believe Dr. DePere explained this last time, the projected enrollment does not. And so when we're showing current enrollment, it includes enrollment from any academy or special programs, but when we're looking at that five-year projected enrollment, it does not. And then all the data that we're showing, we kind of show for reference, what's the current in and out transfer at each school, so you can get an idea of, of what the current state is, and you can kind of apply that to the future. As far as our deficiency costs and FCI, what we're doing is we've calculated a facilities' condition index, which is the cost to renovate a facility versus the cost to replace the facility. And again, for, for our intents and purposes, for our options, we're considering that condition and lifecycle. We have the educational accuracy data there for reference, but we're using that, that hard existing data with the existing structures to drive those decisions. I just want to be very clear on that. Our FCI data is based on all priority one and priority two deficiencies, and then we're taking 50% of the priority three deficiencies. And if you recall, the priority, priority ones and twos are the need-to-have and, and should-have, and now those priority threes are the nicest, nice-to-have. And the reason that we're considering that priority three is we want to make sure that, that we're considering the needs a little bit beyond those five years as we're looking at these decisions. So what I have here, we, we've got a giant stack of stuff in front of you. We've got a background option sheet. Can I borrow yours, Beth? So each school has a, has kind of a feeder pattern background sheet. It's the, it's the long sheet. And then there's a, there's an option sheet that details each of the options that we've developed. I'm going to go through all of these at a high level, kind of bullet point options, and then once we do that, we can crawl into the nitty-gritty of the actual option sheets, just so that, I want to get through it first and then go through the detail. Does that make sense? Okay. So our first feeder pattern is, is Austin. And so just a little bit of background on this area, we know we've had some extensive growth. We've had Madden Elementary open up recently and has been in different flavors of cap and overflow throughout the years. And just, just to kind of show you how these maps work, the high school boundary is in the thick purple color here, and then the shaded background colors are the elementary's boundaries, and then the, the yellow or the orange colors here are the middle school boundaries. What I've done is I have, I've expanded the boundaries beyond the feeder pattern, so if a boundary touches a feeder pattern, I'm showing it on the map. And so if you look at the background data, the only elementary schools that we have that are located physically within the Austin feeder pattern are Oyster Creek and Walker Station, but we've got pieces of Madden, pieces of Lakeview, Holly and Fleming that all feed portions into Austin High School. And so as we kind of develop our options, we're considering all these different pieces that we have. So the options that we have in this area are Build Elementary 51. The district already has a site for this, and I believe design is underway, just funding is, is indeterminate yet because it may be contingent upon a bond. Other option we wanted to consider is we have a large portion of the Lakeview boundary, I believe there's about 310 students that attend Lakeview that actually reside within the Austin feeder pattern. And if we can accommodate those students in, in Austin schools, that's an, that's an option we wanted to consider. Looking at the, at the data sheet, kind of at the bottom, just to kind of show you how this works, I'm going to spend more time going through the, the Austin sheet to make sure that you guys understand how all of the, all the data looks. We've got everything broken out by elementary, middle and high school. We've got year-built square footage, which is the permanent square footage of each facility. We've got our site acreage. Just note that in the cases where we have, I'm sorry, it's on this sheet right here. The big one. In the cases where we have combined sites like Dulles, we do show the, the full site acreage in all three levels, and so you'll see that there as well. Our deficiency costs, again, those are the dollar amounts from PBK, priorities one, two and half of three. Our facility condition index, and again, when I, when I say facility condition index with lifecycle, that is the physical condition of the facility. The next line is our educational adequacy index. Those don't, you know, those aren't added together in any, those are two separate items. We next have our capacity information, and again, that capacity is based on the permanent capacity of each facility. We have the number of portables, and then the total capacity in portables or temporary buildings. Then in the blue columns, we have our enrollment data, current enrollment as of 17, 18, our projected five-year enrollment, our enrollment change over the five-year period, and then just for reference what those net transfers are, current year. And again, the reason that we show that is because the current enrollment would include students transferring in and transferring out for programs, and the projected enrollment does not. And then we have our utilization, and this is enrollment versus the permanent capacity. Per policy FC local, our, our capacity guidelines that are considered well utilized is 80% to 120% of permanent capacity. If a facility falls below that, it's going to be, the utilization is going to be highlighted in kind of a light blue color, and if it's above that, it's going to be highlighted in a pink or red color. So that's the data. The next feeder pattern is Bush. Looking at the data here at the elementary schools, we have a little bit of underutilization. Our utilization is currently a 78% and is projected to, to main, you know, remain relatively flat. One thing that we want to look at in this area is we want to look at possible using some, possibly using some of the excess capacity in the Bush feeder pattern to relieve some of the overutilization in adjacent feeder patterns like Travis or Austin. Next slide is Clements. Looking at this area, this is an area that, that we've got some overutilization, especially at the elementary level. Kind of the big, the big issue here is going to be Commonwealth Elementary. Our utilization at Commonwealth is currently 126%. It's projected to reach 165%. There's also a fun little PASA chart that was shown at the last meeting that has available land. You know, one of, one of the questions that kind of came up in the committee is, hey, can we get a relief school somewhere in Riverstone or in that area for Commonwealth? And there's not a whole lot of land available down there. And so this is kind of a challenging area for us to work through as far as options go. So the options that we had in this area, we have building in addition on Colony Meadows and Commonwealth to, to address that overcrowding. Also consider rezoning to balance enrollment between Fort Settlement and First Colony. The 2014 bond did have a planned addition on First Colony. It was not needed at the time because we had that plan in the, in the Ridge Point feeder pattern to align Baines and Thornton with Ridge Point. And when Thornton comes online, the whole shift area that's currently feeding to First Colony will not feed to First Colony anymore, will have room there. But now, kind of what's driving this option is the projected overutilization at Fort Settlement. And our capacity at Fort Settlement is larger than First Colony, and so it makes more sense to, hey, let's look at putting in addition on First Colony to balance the size of those two schools and then balance those boundaries. One other option that we looked at from, from the, at the elementary level was to actually look at, at putting in addition on Colony Meadows, Colony or Settlers Way and Austin Parkway, to get all of those facilities kind of up to that 1,000 mark, to then balance that enrollment within that, within that feeder pattern. Because again, we have that extensive growth in the Riverstone area, Avalon's at Riverstone, that we need to find a place to accommodate with not a lot of land down there. One other option that came out was to consider repurposing the FBI, FBISD annex on Sweetwater to relieve Commonwealth and Colony Meadows. So that was kind of an out-of-the-box idea that the, the committee kind of came up with. Okay. Next feeder pattern is Dulles. Kind of our big issue that we had in this area was the, the physical condition at Meadows Elementary. It's over 80% and it has the highest FCI in the district. And so what that means is it's going to cost us, you know, 80, 80-plus percent to renovate the building that, you know, versus its replacement cost. And so the, the options that we came up with were to close Meadows based on the condition and rezone students to Barrington Place and perhaps Dulles. The other option we have is to just demolish the existing, the existing facility and rebuild. This would require some swing space because we would not be able to rebuild on the existing site while the existing facility is there. So we'd have to swing those students out of that facility while demolition and construction would take place. Otherwise, there's some, just minor renovations and lifecycle, lifecycle actions that would be, that would occur on the other facilities in this area. Next feeder is Elkins. Again, this kind of jumps off the, the utilization issue that we have at Commonwealth. We have kind of the same issue at Palmer and starting, we're starting to have issues at Sullivan. So the, the biggest growth that we, growth area that we have here is in Palmer, and the area of growth impacts Palmer, which is in the Elkins feeder pattern, but the growth area is actually in Hightower. It's that Fort Bend Toll Road, Lake Olympia Parkway corridor that, that is, that is impacting Palmer. And so we'll be referring to the Hightower feeder pattern for an option that addresses this. Other options that we have in this area, we have low enrollment. Now, I don't want to say low enrollment. We're 76% utilized at Quail Valley Middle School. And so one of the questions was, hey, why are we, why are we underutilized there when we have a GT Academy that has a cap? And so, and a waitlist. And so what, what we got out of that was that if a student, if a student enrolls in Quail Valley at sixth grade and then they, they just, they opt not to stay, they're not backfilled in seventh or eighth grade. The only way that you get into Quail Valley is at sixth grade. And so one of the questions is, hey, can we look at a way to kind of expand that program to draw students away to some of our, from, from some of our over, overutilized middle I'll get into high school options here at the end, but we're looking at kind of some projected overutilization at Elkins. And so we're at 95% now going to 110%, still within FC local parameters, but those numbers are starting to get up. One of the high school options that we're going to be talking about is that, that concept of a dedicated early college high school. And so that would, that would be a, a type of program that could replace all of the academy programs and offered in one facility with dual credit and those types of opportunities for all the students in the district. And I'll be getting into that later, but that's going to be a common theme to address those, you know, 105, 110% overutilization issues that we have at some of our high schools. It's not going to fix our 140, 150% issues that we have at some of our high schools, but it will help address some of the smaller issues. Next is Hightower. Again, our issues that we have here, there is a middle school missing from the chart because Hightower doesn't have a middle school within its attendance area. So all the parks, Goodman and Burton and a portion of Palmer all feed into Lake Olympia for middle school, and then onto Hightower. Our issue that we have in this area is parks. It's projected utilization goes from 106% to 145%. And so the solution in this area is to look at building and, look at a, building a relief school somewhere within the parks and Palmer feeder, those boundaries along that Fort Bend Toll Road and Lake Olympia corridor. And again, looking at our, our high school programs, this is, this is kind of where the, where the difference between the current enrollment and the projected enrollment kind of comes into account. Currently, our, our enrollment or utilization is 80% and it's projected to decline to 77%. I kind of look at that as an increase because in the 80%, we have 214 kids transferring from out of zone. And so it looks like on paper it's decreasing, but in reality, it's increasing because of we, because we have that growth from that Fort Bend Toll Road corridor in there. Is that, I saw some, I saw some weird looks. Does that make sense how I said that or do you need to explain it again? Sure. So remember, our current enrollment includes any academy enrollment in it. And so the current enrollment at Hightower is 2041. And of those 240, those 2041 students, 214 of them are coming in from out of zone for one of the two academies that they have there. And so the projected enrollment from PASA does not include those numbers, and so it shows a decrease of 3%, but if they were, if those programs are maintained and they kept that same rate of, you know, 200 students, it would look like probably closer to 88 or 90%. Does that make sense? Okay. And again, so this is, this is something else, you know, to address this growth in these areas, we're probably going to look at issues at Hightower beyond year five, just based on that growth, because it'll kind of start at the elementary and then work its way up to the high school. And so again, we'll consider that early, early college option. Looking at Kempner, the issues that we have here in this area are, are Lakeview. Lakeview, I believe, is our second highest FCI school at almost 70%. Sugar Mill and Town West were also kind of up there. Those are in the 50s, and so those are, those are some facilities that have some need. We had two different options in this area. The first one is to close Sugar Mill and repurpose it. And when I say close and repurpose it, it's, it's going to go back for district use. It could be anything the district needs it to be to support any kind of program. So we would close Sugar Mill and repurpose for district use, and then we'd have a full modernization, maybe in addition to Sugar Mill or to, to Lakeview to accommodate that Sugar Mill area and the neighborhood right around Lakeview. If you remember, I've been told... If you remember, I've been told the Lakeview story several times now. Lakeview is a boundary that has really four or five concentrations of enrollment. I think there's about one hundred and fifty students right there around Lakeview. And then we've got pockets over here off of fourteen-sixty-four. And I think it's about three hundred and ten kids over on the Austin side of the feeder pattern and a little over a hundred in the Kempner side of the feeder pattern. And so the idea is that we would accommodate those Austin students within the Austin feeder pattern and then make Lakeview large enough to accommodate the Lakeview area, the students right around Lakeview and the Sugar Mill area. The other thing that we wanted to look at is a major renovation at Town West. And one other aspect of this that kind of came out in the committee is we have this feeder pattern split at Barrington Place. And these are, I think we've got about two hundred kids in Barrington Place that they go to Barrington Place and they split and they go to Sugar Mill and Kempner. And then the other half goes to Dulles and Dulles. And so if we could use this as an opportunity to continue to clean up that feeder pattern, that would also make room at Barrington Place for another option that we're going to look at in a second. But we could look at maybe increasing the size of Lakeview and Town West to accommodate all those students in that feeder pattern. The other option that we have is to kind of flip this. Instead of closing Sugar Mill, we would close Lakeview and then have a renovation slash addition to Sugar Mill to accommodate the Sugar Mill students and that Lakeview neighborhood that's right in and around Lakeview. And again, we'd still have the same concept of serving those students in the Austin feeder pattern in the Austin feeder pattern. Okay, our next facility on here is Marshall. And so in this area, our issue is overall underutilization at the elementary level. Currently, we're at seventy-one percent utilized, projected to decline to sixty-three percent. Overall, if we just look at the comparison between the projected enrollment and the capacity, we've got over eleven hundred empty seats at the elementary level in this area. And so one of the concepts is to consolidate Hunter's Glen Elementary School into the other remaining three, which would be Jones, Armstrong and Glover. There's plenty of room in that area. It would bring the, I think it would bring the overall utilization up into the high seventies. We also have some lifecycle issues and some, the facilities kind of range from good to fair. We have some renovations that we need to have and some lifecycle replacements. One of the other issues that we have, of course, is the underutilization at Marshall. And so when we start to talk about those high school options, one of those ideas is to have that early college program at that Marshall facility. Next area is Ridge Point. So the issues that we have here, we've got some projected overutilization really fast due to some of the growth that we're having along the Sienna Parkway and FM five-twenty-one corridors. Utilization at the elementary level is projected to go from eighty-eight percent to one hundred and eleven percent in five years. And so looking at Heritage Rose, it goes from ninety-five to one hundred and eighteen. Leonetti, fifty-one percent this year to one hundred and twenty-nine percent in five years. Scandalin Oak stays about the same. Schiff stays about the same. Sienna Crossing goes from one hundred and four to one hundred and twenty-four percent. And so the elementary option in this area is to build two new elementary schools, one on the Texas Six corridor, kind of in this area to see if we can clean that up and allow Heritage Rose to serve more of the five-twenty-one corridor. And then the other one would be south along that five-twenty-one area or the Sienna Parkway area. One of the questions from the committee is, hey, can we look at putting some additions on these schools? I'm like, well, we just did. And so it's pretty clear from the community that we don't necessarily want to have schools of over a thousand kids. I think that Sullivan was kind of an exception and kind of came out of that master planning process that that community wanted to have a school that large at twelve-hundred. And so we didn't really entertain the ideas of putting additions on schools that already had additions because we would just be crunching spaces like cafeterias and gyms and increased traffic even more. Looking at the middle school, high school options that we are, or issues that we have, our current utilization at Ridge Point is one hundred and eight percent and it's projected to go almost to one hundred and forty percent. So one concept that kind of came out of the committee was the idea of doing a grade configuration change. And what that would look like is we would convert Baines to a six-seven building, Thornton to a, that's a typo in there. Baines would be a six-seven, Thornton would be an eight-nine, and then Ridge Point would be a ten-twelve building. And so it just kind of shifts the grades down. And the idea was is that, hey, we've got some excess capacity at Thornton because we kind of built it a little bit ahead of the growth. Can we better utilize those facilities at the middle school level to take some of the heat off of Ridge Point? Just a couple of caveats to this. In order for it to not involve a double move, it would have to be implemented in the fall. And so if it's not implemented in the fall, that would mean that we would have a student that could potentially start sixth grade at Thornton and then move back to Baines for seventh grade and then go back to eighth grade at Thornton. So in order for it to really work, it would have to start next year. Other considerations is this is kind of a stopgap measure. We know the growth in this area is coming. The high school, the projected enrollment at Ridge Point High School in year ten, I think, breaks four thousand. And so this would kind of be a temporary measure to just get us through to maybe the next bond program. In that scenario, it keeps the overall enrollment, the utilization at one hundred and eighteen percent. So we would still need portables, but it keeps it below the FC local policy until twenty-two, The other options that we talked about in the committee, we talked about putting in addition onto Ridge Point, but it just didn't make a lot of sense because of the limits of the corridors and some of the core spaces that are there. And so what we really talked about was building a ninth grade center to serve Ridge Point. And so this would just be a dedicated ninth grade facility. We'd have to do a little bit more research to see if it would fit on that site or if there's another site somewhere that it could fit. Another, some other ideas that came out in that vein were, hey, can we look at leasing or purchasing the existing facility to retrofit to be a ninth grade center? Those are some of the other ideas that I thought about. I think there was the HCC building that was down south. Maybe we could get that building, repurpose that. Those are some ideas that came out of the committee. But again, we also have those district-wide high school options to consider. I don't think it's going to be enough of a draw to draw enough students out of Ridge Point into an early college to make a difference and not have to have a capital investment in that area, but it is something that may help. Next feeder pattern is Travis. Madden Elementary School, currently one hundred and thirteen percent. And then if you look at the net transfers out, I think there's eighty-three kids that are transferring out of Madden that I believe are Oyster Creek. And so that one hundred and thirteen percent realistically is over one hundred and twenty. It's projected to go to two hundred and fourteen percent near five. Looking at Neil, it's seventy-nine percent now, projected to go to one hundred and forty-one percent. Our overall, this is the best number, the overall utilization is projected to go from ninety-nine to one hundred and forty-two percent in this feeder pattern. And so we kind of have two different phases of options here. See Austin feeder pattern, we talked about that earlier for elementary fifty-one. Does anybody have any idea what eight hundred and fifty students does to two hundred and fourteen percent? Not enough. And so basically, if everybody, if only students from Madden went to fifty-one, Madden would still be overcapacity. And so we also have to look at some other opportunities in this area. Neil, when it was constructed, was designed for a core of a thousand students. Oscar said he can just pop an addition on there next week, right? So we would recommend constructing the addition for Neil. And we'd also have to consider rezoning associated, we would have to expand our area of thinking for rezoning in this area because we do have some additional capacity at some schools and some adjacent feeder patterns like Bush. We have capacity in Holly and at Oyster Creek that we'll need to use. And so we'll need to consider kind of a creative rezoning solution in this area to address Looking at our enrollment at Travis, we're currently at ninety-one percent and that is including three hundred and sixty transfers in. And then we go to ninety-five percent with no transfers in. And so we'll have to look at where those portable programs may go should that happen. And so again, that's kind of part of that driving force for having that early college high school. Okay, our last feeder pattern is Willow Ridge. Our issues here are we've got some marginal condition facilities. They're kind of on that threshold where they're not bad enough. They're not in the Meadows and Lakeview area to drive an automatic replacement, but they're not in great condition. We also have some underutilization overall. We're at eighty-nine percent utilized right now, projected to decline to seventy-four percent. Middle schools, seventy-one to seventy-five, and high schools, high school Willow Ridge, sixty-one to sixty-two percent. So our first option we have here is to consolidate Ridgemont, Ridge Gate, Blue Ridge and Briar Gate and create a PK one facility at Ridgemont. And this kind of aligns with what we heard earlier. And then a two-five facility in another campus. This includes lots of wraparound services. Early literacy and other services could help increase student achievement. So that's one way of going about it. And what we have here is that that two-five facility would likely go on the Shadow Creek Ranch site, which is currently owned by the district over here. And so we would have everybody pre-K through one would be in one facility at Ridgemont. And then everybody would continue to be together in one facility, large facility, at the Shadow Creek Ranch site. Another option, another way to do this is to create an early childhood center at any one of the four elementary sites and then close the other three. Doesn't necessarily have to be Ridgemont. And then another option is to just close Blue Ridge, do major renovations at the remaining facilities. The driver for Blue Ridge, of course, it's that high FCI at fifty-seven percent. And then do major renovations at Briar Gate, Ridge Gate and Ridgemont. And again, with those renovations, that could be flexible. One of those schools could be that early literacy center and the other two could be two-fives. It doesn't matter from a planning standpoint as far as the dollar amount goes. And then, of course, see the district-wide high school options. Okay, so overall high school options, we kind of tasked the committee with a couple tough questions. Do we want to be fiscally responsible and utilize all of our high school capacity before we add more? And then we want to focus on program offerings that provide specialized learning environments. And so kind of the data behind the first bullet is our current high school utilization is at eighty-eight percent district-wide. In twenty-twenty-two, it's projected to go up to ninety-two percent. I think it goes up to ninety-four percent in year ten. And so overall, district-wide, we have capacity. And so kind of here's our overall high school options. And so what I have up here on this map is this is our current high school utilization colored in the background. And so the schools that are in that green color are within policy FC local guidelines. So that means that the utilization is between eighty and one hundred and twenty percent. And if it's in blue, it's below eighty percent. And if it's in dark blue, it's a lot below eighty percent. And then we have our Ridge Point, which is overutilized. It's overpolicy in year five. And so the first high school option is a large rezoning effort that would move students from Ridge Point to Hightower and then Hightower to Willow Ridge and Willow Ridge to Marshall. It's a, you need the capacity from all three of these high schools to be able to absorb all the growth coming into Ridge Point. Okay, that's our first high school option. Our next high school option, combine all academy programs at Marshall and an early college program. And so again, under this scenario, all the academy programs would be replaced by a dedicated early college high school. And so the Marshall boundary would go away. It would have to be redrawn into the adjacent boundaries. And then all high schools would send students to Marshall. This would still require additional action to relieve Ridge Point. It's not going to be enough. There's not enough capacity. Okay, option three, combine all academy programs at Hightower and an early college program. And so we would rezone Hightower among the remaining schools. All the schools would send students to Hightower. I think one advantage to this is that it removes that, Hightower doesn't have a middle school problem because the Hightower boundary would have to be redrawn within the other Again, this would still require additional action to relieve Ridge Point. Okay. That's it for options. That was a ton of data. Do you guys want to start back at the beginning and you want me to go through the data sheets?
Okay.
And then we'll take questions and the trustees can drive the conversation.
Okay. So our community meetings are April third, fourth, tenth and eleventh. The format is going to be similar to the rezoning that we had last time. We'll present all options at all meetings. We'll have our presentation in the auditorium and then we'll have conversation in the commons with boards up that show all of the background information and the options. And then we'll have QR codes set up for each feeder pattern. And so we're not going to ask someone to fill out a long giant survey that has every single option for every single feeder pattern. We're going to have individual options per feeder pattern. And then we'll have those survey, we'll tabulate that survey information to get it to the committee and then we'll review it to develop recommendations.
I'm ready.
Thank you. Thank you. It's a lot of information. Thanks for getting it put together so quickly. I know the last meeting was just Thursday. You guys worked really hard to get it to us to review over the weekend, so thanks for that. Beth, before we take questions, the community meetings are scheduled April third, fourth, tenth and eleventh. Can you tell us the locations of those meetings, please, ma'am?
Yes. The April third meeting is at Travis High School. April fourth at Marshall High School. The tenth is at Elkins High School and the eleventh is at Austin High School.
Thank you. They all start at seven?
Yes, ma'am. They're from seven to nine o'clock.
Seven to nine. Are we going to be posting these on the marquees? I just want to make sure that we're getting the information out to everyone in every way possible.
Yes, we're posting on marquees, doing social media blitz, media releases and also sending out specific communication to those campuses that we've talked about some possible options that would really impact them in a way that they may not have heard with that community so that they're invited to those specific meetings and that they understand that each of the four meetings will have the same format. So logistically, they're able to attend any one.
Are we going to put these in the newspaper as well? Have we talked about that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, we're working with Veronica's group in very close partnership to make sure that our communication bases are covered.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's get to some questions. Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you. Scott, you're starting to get really good at this stuff. That was really an awesome summary. I think you highlighted all the issues that are out there and it was just put together really, really well. So thank you for that. My only suggestion at this time would be that we don't up here get into the weeds on things. Start looking at individual schools and options and things like that. Let the community do its part and then I think it would be best for us to then look at it then. So that's just all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. I agree with that. I think the point of the steering committee is to let them do their work and let the community provide feedback, so thanks for that. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Burden.
Scott, you're available tomorrow and Thursday, correct? For us to talk to? Thursday. Good deal, thank you.
And if any of the trustees want to talk to him, he will be around on Thursday. You can, yes, you can email Norma and she will set up an appointment for you on Thursday. You can, you can, yes, you can email Norma and she will set up an appointment for you on Thursday.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? You have something? Okay, that's it. We're, we're gonna, we're gonna let you guys work. This was just an update, just so that we know, we know what's happening. Cause it's a lot happening.
There's a lot.
Okay, so I'm going to, to bump the next information items until after our closed session. With that, we will now convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 and those sections listed in the agenda and for the purpose of a private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized by law. We are now convened in closed session.